I will now call the meeting to order. Would you please help me with the Pledge of Allegiance, Councilor Farino? We putting that up?
A pledge of allegiance. To the flag. Of the United States of America. And to the Republic of America. For which it stands. One nation. Under God. In the visible. With liberty and justice for all.
Would you please remain standing for a moment of silence? We unfortunately lost two people in our last month that were very instrumental in the town. We had George Senate, who was the person that built the health, the, what the health, the historical room, completely by himself, did a great job, and he passed away recently. And the second one is Virginia Wallace, who was our past library director, and sad to see her go this week. Moment of silence. Okay. Okay. The minutes, we have two sets of minutes, one from February ninth, and the executive session minutes, and then we have them from the sixteenth. The motion is right. Pardon?
Motion to accept the minutes.
Both of them or one at a time?
You want to do them one at a time for the first?
It's much better we do that.
Second to accept the mission, the minutes from the ninth.
Okay, a motion has been made and seconded to accept the executive session minutes from February ninth, twenty twenty-one. All those in favor, please answer yes when your name is called.
Counselor Ruggiero.
Yes.
Counselor Flacott. Counselor DiMarco.
Yes.
Counselor Terry.
Yes.
Counselor Honan.
Yes.
Counselor Conti.
Yes.
Counselor Frino.
Yes.
Vice President Christopher.
Yes.
President Boncory.
Yes, and that contract was signed today, so coming to you Denise, they have our signature on it. Okay, moving forward, the second minutes from the sixteenth, motions accept. Motion to say, Counselor Farino, second.
Second.
Second by Counselor DiMarco. All those in favor, is there any amendments, any deletions, admissions, any changes that anybody sees? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying yes when your name is called.
Counselor Ruggiero.
Yes.
Counselor Flacott. Counselor DiMarco.
Yes.
Counselor Terry.
Yes.
Counselor Honan.
Yes.
Counselor Conti.
Yes.
Counselor Frino.
Yes.
Vice President Christopher.
Yes.
President Boncory.
Motion carries. Okay, I'm going to give out the telephone number for anybody who wants to join in the public hearings or public comment. We are having three public hearings tonight and also public comment twice. The number to call by phone is one three oh one, seven one five, eight five nine two. The ID number for this meeting is eight seven five, seven two three, four six two, eight two. Okay? All right, now moving on to general information and recommendations. I'm very happy to say that we look like we are coming out of the woods on the pandemic situation that we've been in the yellow for the past few weeks. I want to thank Meredith Hurley and Senator Joe Boncory for getting us shots that we needed badly. At first, we got one hundred shots and we gave most of the people in housing that were over seventy-five. And now with the three hundred shots, we were able to take care of people that were sixty-five and over, plus as frontline workers and approximately sixty-four teachers. So, thank you Meredith, thank you Joe Boncory, you're helping us get by this. Okay. Public hearing. The first public hearing is to transfer six hundred and ninety-six thousand, five hundred and sixty-eight dollars and two cents from free cash to the capital stabilization fund.
Counsel President.
Yep.
This is normal procedure that we've been doing for several years, is a fiscal policy that we have that diverts a certain percentage of free cash funds into three stabilizations accounts, and this is the amount set forward for the capital stabilization and the finance committee does support this.
Okay, is there any public that wants to be heard? I don't see anybody on. See sixteen people, but no comments. You see anybody Denise?
No hands up.
Okay, now all those in favor signify by saying aye when your name is called.
Well, this is just the public hearing, correct?
Yeah, we didn't do the motion yet, right?
We didn't make the motion, we'll make it in old business.
No, this is the public hearing, the motion will go to full business, but I need a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion, hearing none, all's in favor, we signify by saying aye when your name is called.
Counselor Ruggiero.
Yes.
Counselor Flacott. Counselor DiMarco.
Yes.
Counselor Terry.
Yes.
Counselor Honan.
Yes.
Counselor Conti. Counselor Frino.
Yes.
Vice President Christopher.
Yes.
President Boncory.
This motion passes. That meeting is closed. The second public hearing is to transfer forty-four hundred and forty-seven thousand and forty-seven dollars and ten cents from key free cash to the general stabilization fund.
Counsel President, this is similar to the previous public hearing where a percentage of free cash is set aside, and this is the portion going to general stabilization fund and does have a positive recommendation from the finance committee.
Okay, does anyone have any comments from the council? Any of the public have any comments? Hearing none, I want to take a motion to close the public hearing on this amount of. Motion to close. Motion to be made to close, and there is a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye when your name is called.
Counselor Ruggiero.
Yes.
Counselor Flacott. Counselor DiMarco.
Yes.
Counselor Terry.
Yes.
Counselor Honan.
Yes.
Counselor Conti.
Yes.
Counselor Farino.
Yes.
Vice President Christopher.
Yes.
President Boncory.
Yes, motion carries that public hearing is closed. The next public hearing is to transfer forty-eight thousand, five hundred and ten dollars and forty-eight cents from free cash to the building stabilization fund. Jim, do you have a moment?
Thank you, this as the past two is similar, that this is a little different in respects that the policy we have caps the amount going into building stabilization at three hundred thousand. So it is either ten percent or an amount sufficient to get to that three hundred thousand dollar mark, and that is exactly what the forty-eight thousand, five, ten, forty-eight is. It is, it caps out that building stabilization account at the present at three hundred thousand. And it does have positive recommendation.
Any other councils which should be heard? Any public which to be heard? Hearing none, seeing no hands. I want to obtain a motion to close.
Motion to close.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to close the public hearing on transferring forty-eight thousand, five hundred and ten, forty-eight to the building stabilization fund. All those in favor signify by saying aye when your name is called.
Counselor Ruggiero.
Yes.
Counselor Flacott. Counselor DiMarco.
Yes.
Counselor Terry.
Yes.
Counselor Honan.
Yes.
Counselor Conti.
Yes.
Counselor Frino.
Yes.
Vice President Christopher.
Yeah.
President Boncory.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to public comment. Do we have anybody on public comment?
I don't see any hand, I'm sorry. We have Jack.
Jack, yep. Cam.
Jack, if you want to unmute yourself?
Okay, Jack Dowd Precinct three. I'd like to comment on an item in old business. And the item is twelve D. Town council vote to accept, a vote from the school committee that the land located at one fifty-one Pauline Street and one forty-one Pauline Street is transferred from the school to the town of Winthrop. I believe one forty-one Pauline Street is the site of the first high school on the corner of Waldemar and Pauline Street. Just built in about eighteen ninety-five. And that land was always owned by the town. The other piece of property is described as one forty-one Pauline Street. And it's always been described for at least a hundred and eighteen odd years as being Ingleside Park. The land and the buildings were under the stewardship of the school because they built a gymnasium, auditorium, and hockey rink. And the hockey rink has been passed back and forth between private and town. But the other two buildings are built on parkland. Every map I've seen describes the area in question, one fifty-one Pauline Street, going back a hundred and twenty years, as being part of Ingleside Park. It was, the land was donated, and the town put in three acres along Pauline Street. And the land has always been described as thirteen acres, but now the latest description of the property, in two studies done by private consulting firms, town of Winthrop Open Space and Recreation Plan, two thousand five to two thousand ten, describes Ingleside Park as ten acres. The reason it's ten acres is because Walden Street was expanded and took a little bit of Ingleside Park away from, and gave it to the roadway and the sidewalk. The next, the most recent Open Space final plan, two thousand fourteen to two thousand twenty-one, describes Ingleside Park as eleven point two acres. I think the school department, and I'm not sure, but I think after a school building is empty for a year, it automatically goes to the town of Winthrop. But the school committee cannot transfer land that they did not have, the single side park. And, um, thank you for listening, good night.
Thank you, Jack, good night. Counselor.
Next up, we have Karen Chavez.
Good evening.
Good evening Karen.
Later on tonight in this meeting, under new business, you will be asked to vote on a transfer of five hundred and six thousand, hundred and sixty-three dollars from the general stabilization fund to appropriate funding for a new trash contract. This could very well go to the finance subcommittee before a vote is taken, but this contract is eight months and nine days old. It's not new. The line item was not funded to the proposals submitted by Capital Waste on June tenth and July one of twenty twenty. It was part of a balanced budget presented to the council by the town manager and ended up being voted on by the council on June sixteenth, twenty twenty. We are now aware this was not a balanced budget. It is not an option now for us not to pay. But trash removal for the future needs to be reevaluated with a trash fee as a likely possibility.
Thank you Karen. Anyone else?
I do not see anybody else with their hands up.
Okay. Moving on. There any correspondence?
We do. Okay. All right, we received a letter from Shannon Pulocis, please, asking that the children go back to their schools, that it's time for the kids to go back to school. And she'd like to see it by April fifth. Okay, and received by Allison Dewar that she does agree with the trash fee and thinks it should be something that the town should pay. And that's all we have for now.
Thank you. Moving on. Committee reports, finance.
Thank you, Counsel President, the finance committee met last Thursday, March fourth. The full subcommittee was in attendance with myself, Counselors Farino and Honan. There were over fifty other people in attendance, including but not limited to the town manager, the CFO, and the council president. There were two items on the agenda. One of the items was a discussion of licensing fees that was questioned about with the economic downturn due to COVID. Should there be some sort of relief in these fees in any way, shape, or form? We did have discussion on that, we felt empathy towards the business owners, but we just felt in the current fiscal financial situation that the town is in, also due to COVID and others, we thought it best not to have a positive recommendation with that. And that conversation ended, the vast majority of the time was a discussion of the trash deficiency, which we could go over in detail now or wait until.
Now let's take it, let me take the motions.
Old business, okay, so there was, we'll go over it piece by piece in the motion, but there was obviously a tremendous amount of comment from the public, and we went over how we got into the situation, and we will discuss that in old business. And we did come out with one recommendation, other than the licensing fee, we did discuss, obviously, it's a deficiency and needs to be addressed, should have been addressed a while ago, it needs to be addressed. And there is a motion coming out for, which we'll discuss later in terms of taking money from stabilization to balance that line item, however, we did make, there was a question about imposing a trash fee for fiscal twenty-one, which is the current year we're in, which ends on June thirtieth, to help, I guess what it would do potentially is create an overage if we were to take money out of stabilization, and then, you know, the thought being it would possibly revert back to free cash, or we could back end stabilization. We had a lot of discussion on that, and we have unanimous recommendation to not impose a trash fee for fiscal twenty-one. But we have scheduled a meeting for a week from tonight at six o'clock. There will be a few items on the agenda, including some of the new business that will be coming to us tonight, but the major topic again will be trash and the, I guess you could call it, contract.
Thank you. Got it?
That is it out of finance.
Let's have a public safety committee report. Is Barbara on now?
Could be on in a moment.
Can we move on then to rules and ordinance, and we'll come back to her?
Yep.
Sure, so the committee on rules and ordinances met last night, and we discussed the Board of Health's proposal around new tobacco regulations that they were putting forward around sales of tobacco specifically in town, and determined that the Board of Health's recommendations were within their purview and something that they were going to be taking up and having future hearings about, so it was really just a discussion, not something that we felt we needed to make a motion on. So.
I believe their meeting at the same time tonight as we're meeting, so it's unfortunate, we can't be on.
Yes, my understanding is that they're still going to have another hearing about this at their next meeting as well, to solicit more public comment, so so anyone interested in that can go to that meeting.
Okay, that the end of your report, is Barbara on now? Counselor Flacott?
I don't see Barbara on yet.
Counsel President?
Yeah.
There was a Millerfield committee meeting also that I'd like to give a brief report on.
Okay, why don't we do that?
Okay, there was a Millerfield committee meeting also a week ago Thursday, this coming Thursday, a week ago, March fourth. I want to thank Vinnie Crossman, my co-chair on that, and Kevin Chavez for for their help with that meeting since we were in the finance meeting. And the thoughts coming out of that meeting, the Millerfield project remains on budget with all line items. All the fencing has been completed. There was a few gates that we had to address and some fencing along the A field side, which has been completed, the interior of the fieldhouse is ongoing, we did stenciling of Viking heads. That is complete, some small details still need to be complete. All the FF and E has been ordered for the fieldhouse, lockers and cubbies were installed last weekend. Thank you to Corolla Construction. Street of Plumbin was finishing installing sink and ice machine for the trainer's room. The Volk has been called back in to do some metal railings for stairs that lead up to the eaves, and they were very excited about that, and we were happy to have their help. Some smaller jobs are just being finished with some window replacement screens and exhaust vents. And all, and we, you know, thank Honan Sign is in the process of creating all the signage that will be used down at the fieldhouse on the tennis court portion of the Millerfield meeting. The, as people can see, the courts have been demolished, the demolition has started. The asphalt is to be removed very soon. And we're trying to, you know, do it in sections to decrease the site disruption. We're starting a small retaining wall there, and there's going to be ongoing work into the spring. They have, we have weekly construction meetings, and the estimated time of completion for that area, including the sidewalks and the safety improvements that are going to be put in, will be fourth of July. That is it for Millerfield.
Okay, thank you Jim, and just people's information, I see a lot of people telling you that this is taxpayer money. This is not coming out of taxpayers' money, this is coming out of SBAC and the Millerfield Committee, which has an excess of money that they didn't spend on the school, and they have to spend it, and they can't give it back.
Right, this money is coming out, there was, after an audit was done of the schools, it was found that we had roughly one point two or one point three million dollars that was left by, you know, the first thought was to, hey, let's just give this back to the taxpayers. There was only a small percentage which can go back, which is fifty thousand dollars. So we've been fortunate, we put some of the money towards this project, we also addressed many items with the high school in terms of new safety features and glassing and stuff like that. And then there was, had always been money put aside from the Millerfield project, as the original intent of the project was to address parking at that site, so this is not any new money that has been found, or, you know, this is money that had been earmarked for this project. So yes, not any additional fees, penalties, fines, interest, whatever, from the taxpayers for this.
Thank you Jim. Is Barbara Flacott with us yet?
Not yet.
Is there someone else who was on that committee that can give a report? Rob, I think you were, were you not?
Yeah, I was on the committee. We was, we essentially were waiting for some more feedback, essentially, is that accurate Peter? Not to put you on the spot.
Yeah, I think my understanding of what our motion was, that we wanted to move forward with the two, with the two applications from National Grid that were on, that weren't on Bowden Street, so that the two that we didn't have as many questions about could still move forward, and that we wouldn't hold up any projects that they were working on with that, but that the one, we wanted to still get some more answers about the double poles on Bowden Street. I know, Steve, does that sound like what your recollection of it was as well?
Yeah, so I spoke to Barbara today, she was going to make a motion to approve both Madison Street and the Winthrop Street work. She put language in those motions that basically holds National Grid accountable for infrared repairs on the pavement. But as Counselor Christopher said, Bowden Street is put on hold until National Grid investigates further if they really need that additional pole. They may be able to put that piece of equipment on the existing pole as is one of the requests that we had made to look into, and so that's the information I have from today's discussion with her.
Did everybody receive the motions that were sent? I sent them out probably right before the meeting, there was three motions that Barbara did for these three.
We'll get them.
They can bring them up right, in all business.
A town manager's report.
Hi, thank you very much. First off, some good news is that we're going to have, although we have a fair amount of town staff that's been working on site throughout the pandemic, we're going to have the vast majority of staff working on site again, starting in the beginning of April. We're going to be announcing as well public hours, we're still trying to figure out how to best keep everyone safe, whether it's on an appointment basis at the Harvey Room, or if we do it with some type of greeter system at the front door of Town Hall, and then have a representative from the department come and kind of greet the people. We still, in the midst of this pandemic, we still have concerns about keeping our staff safe and healthy, and keeping the public safe and healthy, and we don't just want a bunch of people who are in contact with each other, kind of in the same spaces, so we're working on it, we're working towards it. Excited to have some more back in the offices, Denise, mute yourself, there you go. So otherwise, excited to do that, excited to continue to utilize some of the newer technologies that we have in place, and we have kind of teed up steel dealing with some of the, not necessarily repercussions, but the changes in our decision-making process that we're making after the DDoS attack that happened earlier this year with the school department and the towns. We're setting up our town network to operate through a different firewall and on a more secure managed network. Schools are also pursuing increased cybersecurity. That's something that's very interesting to us at the federal level with the new federal bill, the AR, the American Rescue Plan. One of the items in there is specifically for school departments, for E-rate, it's seven point one billion dollars for technology for school departments and for whether it be remote learning or technology solutions for student populations. So that's something that we, as the school department in Winthrop, will be able to utilize. There is money specifically for school districts as well. That calculation is a little bit more difficult for me to do based off the summaries that have been provided to date, but we are working to get numbers on that, so that Lisa can have a good idea of potentially what to look forward to. In terms of the town, we will, there's state aid and then there's local aid. Our local aid in the summaries that we have been provided right now is a healthy amount. The problem is, is that we don't necessarily have the parameters of how we can spend that money. There are indications that we can utilize some of that money for lost revenue over the past fiscal year, and we could potentially utilize it as we see fit to a point. That said, we need further clarity on how we can utilize this money, because in the time before I came to Winthrop, there's been a history of utilizing one-time money to solve operating issues within the budget. I don't want that to be the case in the future. So, we will be very cautious and conservative when utilizing these funds and budgeting this money within the parameters of what the federal government gives us. With that, I would like to pass it to Meredith Harley to give a quick update, thank you.
Okay. Are we moving on? School department update. You're giving it to Meredith, you're giving it to Meredith.
Yeah.
Okay.
Hi guys, I'll keep it quick. Switch over. There you go. Can you guys see this okay? So some updates to provide to you tonight. So some updates to provide to you tonight. Alright, there we go. Okay, so let me back up. Move my screen. So as of right now, um okay, so our total confirmed cases as of today is two thousand and thirty with thirty-five um deceased. We currently have thirty-eight isolated and one thousand nine hundred and fifty-seven who have recovered, so as um as everybody's aware, our incidence rate is coming down, our cases are coming down. So as of right now, we stand at twenty-nine point one cases per one hundred thousand over fourteen days as our incidence rate. And our percent positive is dipped below the three percent mark and sits at two point six two, which um which is keeping us as a yellow designated, just as in comparison, the last time we spoke on February fourteenth. Fifty-seven point nine cases was our incidence rate and our percent positive sat at four point eight five, so we're definitely improving. In terms of our vaccine rollout, these are the groups that are currently eligible for vaccine for vaccines here in the Commonwealth, um we're expanding, it's expanding ever so feels slow, but it's actually going, you know, I think that they're moving swiftly. The next up as of three eleven will be educators, childcare workers and um school staff, so we have, I'm gonna try and pause this, hold on. There we go, okay, so this is kind of the biggest news that I wanted to share with everybody, so we received a hundred doses of Moderna, which was the last update that I'd given you and it's been transferred for East Boston Neighborhood Health Center. So out of those uh one hundred doses, um this is just a breakdown of where that went, so ten of those doses went to first responders as their second dose with a total of fifty going to homebound and forty going to Winter Pousing Authority, um low-income senior housing. We've since received, actually this is incorrect, we've since received three hundred Moderna doses from MassDPH. And held the clinic this past Saturday where um to prioritize those that uh continue that in low-income senior housing that were unable to be vaccinated with the with the first little batch that we took from East Boston Neighborhood Health Center. As we went through, we did extensive outreach to to the population. We realized that quite a few folks had received their vaccinations other places, so then it left us with a position of where do we go next? So we then outreach to any resident over the age of seventy-five. Um and then over the age of sixty-five that were on waitlist that had called and said that, you know, they're having a hard time making um making appointments. We outreach Dr. Shaw's office, we talked to Dr. Pransky's office, we talked to local nursing agencies, um we've since called Houses of Worship. We um made phone calls to every person directly in public housing um that qualified for vaccines. To assure that they, if they were interested in being vaccinated, they had that opportunity. We then worked with the Winter Public Schools to vaccinate their staff as they were they were coming towards the next level of eligibility. So this past Saturday, we did two hundred and twenty um vaccines. Yesterday, we went out and did an additional twenty homebound and then tomorrow we are doing an additional sixty with as the safety net of those in low-income senior housing that missed the first round. I have a seventy there also because this is where um our tracking system and I have to give an immense amount of credit to the the staff and the volunteers that have been working in my office, um because we don't want to get into a situation where we've provided first doses and then when it comes to second doses, they're not available, so because um because we took this supply from the state, those second doses are already guaranteed. And we've already received the second doses to for to the first round of Moderna that we took from East Boston. So we are actually starting our second doses our first, our second doses as of the eleventh, um so this will be the breakdown of that going forward. These, this is just a list of the local sites that we're pushing people to, um you know, I know we were hearing today that East Boston was loosening up with um with vaccine availability, so you know, they've been really good partners to work with, um and people have been saying that they've had good help working with um with East Boston, so that would be and sorry, I missed this, so this is eligible to anybody over the age of sixty-five and two-plus comorbidities and they'll also be able to take um they'll be able to take educators and childcare workers as of um Thursday. How we are continuing to work with folks that um that are struggling to make vaccine appointments. We're putting people on a waitlist in our office so that if we do take in these small kind of catchments of vaccine from the state and people are eligible, we're outreach to them immediately to try and make appointments or um utilize that supply. We have ten days to utilize any state-supplied vaccines. So um we we try to, you know, have these waitlists available to us, um but in the meantime encourage people to also keep looking for the state sites. We're prioritizing, obviously, those are hu- those who are homebound and those that have are um disabled and unable to easily access vaccination sites other places. Just wanted to touch a little bit on Project Beacon to give you guys some updates as well, these are the latest numbers that are coming out of Project Beacon. So this is just a small graph showing um the availability of appointments. Which is the the blue bar right here, um the total amount of slots that have been available. And then um the orange bar representing the total amount of appointments that have been made for each of the six weeks. That um Project Beacon has been open here in Winthrop and then the total number of tests that have actually been done at Project Beacon. You know, week six, which is um which was last week, they haven't updated um the numbers yet for week seven. That, the site was closed on Monday and Tuesday, which is why those numbers are a little are um lower, they had planned for that. Also here, this just represents, um this just represents those, the line here represents the amount of Winthrop residents that have been tested um as a percentage of total tests, so it was increasing and now it's um it's been decreased again, so that is those are my updates and I am happy to answer any questions that you guys might have.
Thank you, Meredith.
Oh, and also, I really have to say a huge thank you to the MRC. They've been instrumental in helping in these efforts. It's a big undertaking to take on um not just the homebound, the homebound vaccination effort, but also, you know, trying to you know, we're in like this stopping and starting where we're, you know, given an amount of vaccine under a deadline, under the eligibility restrictions. And then at the same time, trying to navigate volunteers and availability and um standing up these sites really in a relatively short amount of time, the sixty doses that we are using tomorrow essentially have to be on a off our manifest by Friday, um by the state, um the state standards. So we were really trying to pull it together last night and all day today to get people registered, so if people have been familiar with the state site um for booking appointments, we have use that same site to book our appointments for clinics, so when when that site goes down, our site goes down, when data's lost on that site, um we're going through the same, the same difficulties here locally, um to make sure, I mean, Thursday Thursdays are now a known day that we don't want to be on prep mod or the state system because it most likely would crash with the releasing of um of larger amounts of appointments, so you know, it's not always easy and we're doing this really heavily weighted on volunteer effort, which is amazing, um and and kudos to the MRC for really kind of being the ones, the go-tos on this.
What, Council of Michael?
The President, I have two items to
Austin, by all means, finish up.
Okay, my two questions that are two items that I have, uh first, uh the town sent out mailers to um the community concerning COVID nineteen resources, it's a nice little front and back thing that you should get in the mail that has all of the local resources available uh for COVID nineteen. Um and there's more info at the uh town's COVID website, which is winthropcovidnineteen.com. No dashes or anything like that in it. Lastly, um our rental relief program was rolled out as of March first, very excited about that. There are applications that are already in process, um we've already been able to help some families in town. And the program is going to run until the end of March, um or when the state um can curtails the dates on it. And the state has, is most likely setting up their own rental relief program as well, uh considering how some of the federal aid is available, um so there's more information at the town's website concerning rental relief. Also, Mia Morey is helping with applications for that, um if there's members of the community that would need help with that, um with that, thank you very much.
Thank you, I'm just so proud of Winthrop for taking care of the people that are homeless and taking care of people that are hungry. And Winthrop has done a great job and I'm so proud of you all. Go ahead, go ahead, come on.
My question is for uh Town Manager Austin, if 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 you're wrapped up. Is there an update on the library? We haven't talked about the library for a while, I know we're talking about Town Hall opening up at least in a limited capacity on April first, but I think I, a lot of people would really like to hear an update on what the plans are for the library moving forward as well.
Sure, so uh we actually have a discussion with uh the library union. It's either this week or next. A fair amount of the staff is um closer to um working full-time hours because of some of the retirements and resignments that have happened within the department. For the time being, what we have done um is that we located one of the parklets near the library so that there was wifi available, um there's heaters available as well, which if the weather's nice the next couple of days, maybe those won't be as necessary. But people can kind of get materials from the library and hang out outside in open air where um feel a little bit more confident in people being safe. Longer term though, uh we are in discussions with the staff concerning uh what the town's reopening plans are gonna be. Again, the focus is on just how to keep people uh safe that enter the building and the staff safe. Not necessarily trying to keep people out of the building, it's uh just figuring out how to do things safely, so we have good ideas about the quarantine of materials and all that type of things, um it will get easier with the rollout of the vaccine. Um and then we're going to be figuring out the um best complement of hours that we can cover with our staffing levels right now. Um and then we'll be taking uh that into account in the future with
Thank you, Austin.
We're, we're providing services, we're excited about the outdoor staff. We do have staff that's in there, um clo- relatively close to the hours that we were operating before, just without people coming into the building from the public.
Thank you.
Counsel Terry.
Thank you, um I have a few questions and it's just back on the library, so we don't have, I mean, I know you you spoke about it, I, we do not have a definitive date that the library will be open in some way, shape or form physically that people can go in.
We do not have a date for the real.
Okay, and you had, you had said in your, in your um discussion about Town Hall and you just said April, Consul de Maco just said April first, is April first the date that Town Hall will be open?
Not to the public, to uh having the majority of the staffing in. I was mentioning earlier that we're looking at going appointment basis, we're just determining if we're gonna have appointments based in the Harvey Room or we're gonna have some type of greeter system and have people report to uh the main front door entrance of Town Hall. Again, it's about limiting interactions um in people's workspaces and trying to keep people as safe as possible.
So do we have a date when we think Town Hall will be open? I mean, other businesses, schools are gonna be open, restaurants are open. You know, a lot of things are open, do we have a date when we can see oh with the ability to go into Town Hall to do transactions?
Uh no, we do not have a date yet.
Okay, I hope that will be soon. On the Ingleside Park and I see, uh I thank Director Calla for being here. Just want to confirm, I know we discussed this at a couple of meetings ago and a lot of it has to do with weather. I just want to make sure that weather is the only thing that we're waiting on and not, you know, do we have you know, high confidence that that park will be back in working order by the middle of spring? Either Town Manager or Director Calla.
Are you referring to the playground?
Yeah, Ingleside, yes.
So I know that uh Sean Driscoll has been working with Anna, um th- there was an insurance uh payout. My understanding, I don't know the exact amount, I know that there is still an additional cost that has to be allocated to replace the equipment and the rubber in that park. I know that Anna and Sean Driscoll are working through that.
Yeah, I I know we have different uh insurance policies and and I see Anna here now and I think Anna had said that we have a pretty low deductible on the flooring on the back, but the uh the equipment itself is going to cost, you know, kind of substantial money. I just wanted to know if, are we really just waiting for weather or are we waiting to try to get an appropriation?
So I can, um I can give um some more updates on that, so we have a final sort of, um I don't wanna say final, but we have feedback from the insurer on what how much will be covered, so the value, um so the value to do the replacement repairs is around a hundred twenty-two thousand dollars, I wanna say. They were actually able to uh provide us with a scenario in which the equipment could be covered under our property insurance, which they had initially said they did not think that would be possible. Um and so they um they were able to cover basically everything covered under the policy, however, we have a fifty thousand dollar deductible. So what they have done is we have to apply a fifty thousand dollar deductible and then they have and we've received funding from them for about seventy-two thousand dollars for the remaining amount. I believe that um Sean Driscoll is working to finalize uh the process for the vendor so that we can make sure that when we come to council, is it just a fifty thousand dollar transfer or is it, you know, fifty-five thousand dollars, you know, two hundred and fourteen, you know, whatever, whatever the exact amount is, so happy to, our plan actually is to get a motion in front of you all for the next meeting, um we should have a a final number for that at that point. And then, and then my understanding is that, yes, they need, they need to Director Calla's point, that they need a certain number of days in a row with a certain temperature so that the that the rubber matting will actually set correctly.
Okay, thank you on that, and Austin, you had mentioned something, I think, about cybersecurity, but we do currently have cybersecurity through Comcast, correct?
So the Comcast is our internet service provider, so there is solutions that internet service providers can provide concerning denial of service attacks. That can be a solution for um a DNS registry, um which like the school and town network would be. So the solution in place for the DDoS attack that happened in terms of cybersecurity was a Comcast solution. That said, previously where we're not paying Comcast for a solution, we have managed service providers who are managing our network, so this is something that we are going to be revisiting with our managed service providers concerning the issues that happened in January and February.
Okay, and the last thing I'll just say is, I I I I think we should be having in-person meetings, I know some people don't want to have it, I want to have them, I hope that the town manager is gonna have that available to us hopefully by the next meeting, if not the latest by the first meeting in April, so now we're having kids go back to school, we're, people are going shopping every day, people are opening up and we are sitting in a hole, so I encourage us to get back to in-person meetings and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. At the end of your report, Austin?
Yeah, and in terms of the in-person meetings, I think uh you all have had discussions about that, that's not necessarily Yeah. And in terms of the in-person meetings, I think you all have had discussions about that. That's not necessarily a town manager's decision. And also caution that last week, the governor of Texas was saying things that were very similar concerning the rollback of restrictions. And the president and the director of the CDC made comments about not rolling things back too quickly because you can put other people at harm. So just wanna make sure we're cognizant of that. As happy as we all are about the vaccinations, I am more happy than anyone to try to roll some of this stuff back to normal. It is not something that we're just gonna flip a switch and say everyone come in and potentially put people in harm's way. And so you're your counselor, still just trying to follow the advice that's coming from health professionals and the CDC. Thanks.
Okay. Counsel Frino.
Just one quick one. I just wanted an update on the surplus vehicles, how that process is going, town manager?
Sure. So Steve Calla and Monica Ford were in conversations about surplusing those vehicles. It had something to do with the inspections of the current state of the vehicles to get before they got on surplus lists, but it's being, it's still being worked on.
Okay. Do you have Counsel Honan?
Just my two cents on in-person meetings. I would rather be at home, and I'm just speaking for myself. I'd rather be at home without a mask than sit in a meeting in a large room with a mask on, trying to be heard, you know, and we're all muffled.
It, it didn't work good at the school committee last night with three people in the hall and the rest on Zoom. It just didn't work where you couldn't hear the people. They didn't have their own mugs. But as far as the school committee, we've had two meetings since our last meeting. The first meeting was the 22nd, and on the 22nd, we voted to, February 22nd, we voted to put an alternate fall program together, and we put football, soccer, volleyball, and swimming on the agenda. We had buyer's fifteen-minute test. We're getting put into town. We had card readers and locks that are approved by ADA. In the meeting on the 9th, which was, I mean, 8th, which was last night, we voted to bring the kindergarten through fifth grade back to school full-time in accordance with the governor's proclamation. We voted to table the middle school and high school until the next meeting, which is next Monday, the 9th. But I understand that DESI now came out with a ruling that middle school can go back by April 28th. So right now, we have the middle school on the edge, and we have the K through five going back on the 5th. Okay. Any questions?
Thank you, President Boncori. My understanding, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, President Boncori. So the, the DESI ruling is that K through five will go back no later than April 5th. And that the middle school will go back no later till April 28th. Great news to get the young kids back in school. We know they, they, they have to be there. That's great. My concern is with the high school kids. There's no DESI regulations whatsoever, that no, no guidance that has come out.
No, yeah.
The seniors don't, they, their last day of school is in May. So we, we're not even in April 28th with them. Let's, let's be honest. Our kids have not been in full-time school for over a year. That is a, that's, that's an emergency. That is a town-wide, statewide, nationwide emergency. We need to, Massachusetts isn't helping us. It's time for Winthrop to step up. So I implore anybody on the school committee who has a vote next Monday, send our kids back to school on April 5th. Because you have the ability to do that. So that, that, that's all I have to say, and I appreciate your time, President Boncori.
Okay. All business. Barbara, you want now? Counsel Flockhart?
Okay. If you take it off, if you hit star six, Counsel Flockhart, you can get off mute.
I'm unmuted now. I hear.
Thank you. 12A on the agenda is yours. So do you wanna give a, make a motion on that?
Yes. That's the motion on Bowden Street.
Oh, that's the motion. On 12A is on Madison.
On Madison? All right, we'll do Madison first. Let me just get to it here. Okay. All right. The Public Safety Committee. I gotta turn the TV down so that I don't hear this.
I kinda like the TV on Counsel Flockhart. It makes you sound like Godlike.
Oh, where the devil is the button?
Did this motion is to approve Madison Street?
Okay. No, this, yes, this is to do some excavation on Madison. All right. The Public Safety Committee recommends granting permission for the petition of National Grid Plan Number 281 98398 Madison Avenue to excavate Madison Avenue and to run and maintain underground electric conduits together with such sustaining and protecting fixtures as it may find necessary for the transmission of electricity while maintaining all safety conditions for vehicular and pedestrian traffic and replacing the pavement using an infrared process at the expense of National Grid. Now, National Grid originally said that that would be the town's expense, but we want that to be National Grid's expense.
All right. So the motion is before us to approve National Grid Plan Number 28198398 of Madison Ave. All those in favor say aye. Please take a roll call.
Counsel Regero.
I could, excuse me, before your vote, could I just have an opportunity to discuss and just hear from Director Cal on this to make sure that?
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
No, that's okay.
Is there a particular question or you just?
No, just wanted your opinion. I'm, I'm assuming you're in the meeting for this, but I just, you know, wanna hear if you sign off.
Yes, the majority of work is actually on private property, but any excavation on the roadway will be restored with infrared asphalt and, and any panels that are disturbed on the sidewalk will be restored with, with cement. So I'm, I'm, I have no objections to, to the motion.
Any questions? Anyone else in favor say aye when your name is called.
Counsel Regero.
Yes.
Counsel Flockhart?
Yes.
Counsel DiMarco?
Yes.
Counsel Oteary?
Yes.
Counsel Honan?
Yes.
Counsel LaConte?
No.
Counsel Frino?
Yes.
Vice President Christopher?
Yes.
President Boncori?
Yes. Motion carries. Okay, the next one is 12B. I understand that's one that you do not want to pass. That's Bowden Street? Is that correct?
Bowden Street. Yes.
You have a motion to reject that?
Yes. The Public Safety Committee recommends that the petition of National Grid and Verizon New England, Inc. Plan Number 29672409 Bowden Street be denied permission to install a new pole on Bowden Street until substantial progress has been made by fall 2021 to remove all double poles in the town of Winthrop, at which time an additional pole on Bowden Street will probably be unnecessary. I'm sorry that I was not on to give you my report explaining all of this.
All right, that's okay. Motion to be first to deny the petition for 29672409 Bowden Street. All those in favor denying this, and if I was saying aye?
Discussion? You want a discussion? Yeah, sorry. Can I just ask Steve, what, even council president's opinion? Should we deny it or post or table it? They're gonna come back to us at some point on it. Is this just ending it or should we table it?
I, I did have a discussion with Dan Cameron from National Grid. He seemed pretty confident that he was gonna, as Counsel Flockhart said, that they were certainly gonna make a commitment to double poles, but he also seemed quite confident that they could find a they, they could potentially place that equipment, which he does say is necessary, on an adjacent pole in that area. So I would say to, you know, I, I don't think it needs to be tabled. I think it can be denied and, and let, let them come back to us with a new petition.
Okay, I'm just saying if it's come backs to us, then it's at least a minimum of two meetings before it's gonna get voted on. But if that's okay, that's fine.
All right. Motion to deny. Is there any other discussion? I hear none. All those in favor signify by saying yes to denying this when your name is called.
Counsel Regero?
Yes.
Counsel Flockhart?
Yes.
Counsel DiMarco?
Yes.
Counsel Oteary?
Yes.
Counsel Honan?
Yes.
Counsel LaConte?
Yes.
Counsel Frino?
Yes.
Vice President Christopher?
Yes.
President Boncori?
Yes. The next motion is also from the Public Safety Committee, which doesn't need a second in its National Grid Plan Number 2993191 on Winthrop Street. Barbara, you want to speak on it?
Yes. The Public Safety Committee recommends granting permission for the petition of National Grid Plan 29993191 Winthrop Street to excavate Winthrop Street and to run and maintain underground electric conduits together with such sustaining and protecting fixtures as it may find necessary for the transmission of electricity while maintaining all safety conditions for vehicular and pedestrian traffic and replacing the pavement using an infrared process at the expense of National Grid. It's the same as Madison Avenue.
Okay. Motion been made and second, it's coming out committee. All those in favor of National Grid's Plan 2993191 on Winthrop Street signify by saying aye?
Counsel Regero?
Yes.
Counsel Flockhart?
Yes.
Counsel DiMarco?
Yes.
Counsel Oteary?
Yes.
Counsel LaConte?
No.
Counsel Frino?
Yes.
Vice President Christopher?
Yes.
President Boncori?
Yes.
Thank you.
To my understanding, the 12D has been taken off the agenda. Is that correct?
For review, yes. It's gonna be continued for review.
Yeah, I think you forgot Counsel Honan on that vote.
Counsel Honan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Don't forget anybody. Next one is the Town Council Transfer 696,568.2 from free cash to the Stabilization Fund. I think that shows Jim?
Yep, there's a motion that the town, as you just said, the town council move vote, Town Council Vote to Transfer 696,568.2 from free ca, free cash to Capital Stabilization Fund in accordance with the Town Council Policy or take any other action relative there too. This does come out of committee with a positive recommendation.
Is there any discussion on it? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying yes when your name is called.
Counsel Regero?
Yes.
Counsel Flockhart?
Yes.
Counsel DiMarco?
Yes.
Counsel Oteary?
Yes.
Counsel Honan?
Yes.
Counsel LaConte?
Yes.
Counsel Frino?
Yes.
Vice President Christopher?
Yes.
President Boncori?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Counsel President, I moved at the Town Council Vote to Transfer 447,047 from Free Cash to General Stabilization Fund in accordance with the Town Council Policy or take any other action relative there too. It's also come out of committee with.
It doesn't need a second. Is there any discussion on it? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Counsel Regero?
Yes.
Counsel Flockhart? Counsel DiMarco?
Yes.
Counsel Oteary?
Yes.
Counsel Honan?
Yes.
Counsel LaConte?
Yes.
Counsel Frino?
Yes.
Vice President Christopher?
Yes.
President Boncori?
Yes. The next one, 12G is to transfer 48,510.48 from Free Cash to the Building Stabilization Fund. Counsel Oteary?
It was stated to transfer 48,510.48 from Free Cash to Cap Building Stabilization in accordance with Town Council Policy or take any other action. This came out with positive recommendation. Just for clarification, this will bring the balance for building stabilization to 300,000. Capital Stabilization will be at 2.996 million dollars and general stabilization will be 2.3, pending other most, 2.3 million dollars.
All those in favor signify by saying aye when your name is called. No discussion?
Counsel Regero?
Yes.
Counsel Flockhart?
Yes.
Yes.
Counsel DiMarco?
Yes.
Counsel Oteary?
Yes.
Counsel Honan?
Yes.
Counsel LaConte?
Yes.
Counsel Frino?
Yes.
Vice President Christopher?
Yes.
President Boncori?
Yes. Motion carries. Okay, the next thing is discussion on the Winthrop Board of Health restricted tobacco price. I believe they have pulled that. Don't want us to have it on, on the council agenda. Is that correct?
Um, we, our committee made the decision that they were within the discretion to make these policies themselves. Yes.
So we are not gonna address this at all? And we'll move on with the discussion for board of license on licensing fees.
Counsel President, we discussed this in Finance Committee. This is a, a, this was a thought to give some relief to the business owners in regards to certain fees. And we just thought that Finance Committee came out with an unfavorable recommendation on doing this at this time with the current financial situation with the town.
Okay, so there's a motion not to bring it forward. Peter, Counsel Christopher?
Yeah, so I think that this is something that's important to do. The businesses through no action of their own were forced to shut down because of the pandemic last, last year. And I think just as a means of fairness, it would be appropriate for the town to at least give them a small discount based off of that. So I'm gonna make a motion to direct the town manager to provide a 25% discount on licensing fees for the next fiscal year for licensees who are not able to operate their businesses due to the restrictions associated with the COVID-19 pandemic in the past year.
President Boncori, I'll second that.
All right, motion been made and seconded. We'll send it to Finance Committee to determine if we can do that. So let's send to Finance. Thank you. Okay, new business. Peter, would you take this over?
What was that?
Would you take it over? New business.
Take over new business?
Yeah.
Sure. I just, I don't know why we moved on from the, the last motion that I made. All right, all right. I think I'm, I'm gonna take over new business. So the first?
You moved on.
Okay. So the first item on new business. A motion to transfer 500,000, 506,163 from General Stabilization Fund to appropriate funding for the new trash contract. I'm going to send that to the Finance Committee. And if we, the clerk would call the roll for sending that to the Finance Committee.
Counsel Regero?
Yes.
Counsel Flockhart?
Yes.
Counsel DiMarco?
Yes.
Counsel Oteary?
Yes.
Counsel Honan?
Yes.
Counsel LaConte?
Yes.
Counsel Frino?
Yes.
Vice President Christopher?
Yes.
President Boncori?
Okay, so the next item on the agenda is a motion to transfer 29,000 water sewer retained earnings for the water sewer, the water rate and the water loss study. I will make I will make a motion to send that to the Finance Committee. Uh, will the clerk please call the roll?
Counselor Ruggiero.
Yes.
Counselor Flock had.
Yes.
Counselor DeMarco.
Yes.
Counselor Terry.
Yes.
Counselor Honan.
Yes.
Counselor LaConte.
Yes.
Counselor Frino.
Yes.
Vice President Christopher.
Yes.
President Boncory. Thank you. Motion carries.
Okay, there's a motion to transfer ten thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars from water sewer retained earnings for remote water monitoring equipment. I'd make a motion to send that to the Finance Committee, will the clerk please call the roll?
Counselor Ruggiero.
Yes.
Counselor Flock had.
Yes.
Counselor DeMarco.
Yes.
Counselor Terry.
Yes.
Counselor Honan.
Yes.
Counselor LaConte.
Yes.
Counselor Frino.
Yes.
Vice President Christopher.
Yes.
President Boncory.
Yes.
Motion's referred.
Okay, next motion, the Town Council vote to increase retirees' cost of living from twelve thousand to thirteen thousand. I'll refer that to the Finance Committee, will the clerk please call the roll?
Counselor Ruggiero.
Yes.
Counselor Flock had.
Yes.
Counselor DeMarco.
Yes.
Counselor Leteri.
Yes.
Counselor Honan.
Yes.
Counselor LaConte.
Yes.
Counselor Frino.
Yes.
Vice President Christopher.
Yes.
President Boncory.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, and I will see the chair back to Counsel President Boncory.
Thank you. Okay, the next thing on the agenda is to propose a trash fee. Uh, the trash fee is uh, going to the Finance Committee, they've been discussing it, they've been looking at it for quite some time, and I think it, it necessarily goes back to them. Any discussion?
Yeah. Go ahead Jim. So just uh, for confirmation, because some of this, any information regarding this line item on the budget is relatively time sensitive. Um, I don't know if we, you know, we did come out with one motion saying that we recommended no fee for fiscal twenty-one. I don't know, I mean, since we're, since we don't have one now, I don't even know if we need to vote on that, but if, if the council chose to do something different, it, it is relatively time sensitive. Um, and it is even, you know, as we go further in this process, there is a timing issue on this, the town manager and has a obligation to the council to, to present a balanced budget. To do that, he's going to, well, he's either going to have to make some serious decisions on, on where to cut money from the budget, or he is going to have to uh, you know, he's going to have to cover that roughly five hundred thousand dollars for fiscal twenty-two's budget along with um, a substantial amount of other items that were not fully funded in fiscal twenty-one. Um, so I just don't know if you want to vote on a fiscal, if you want to vote that negative motion on a fiscal twenty-one uh, trash fee or just leave.
I wanna keep it on the agenda because it's necessary for next year, it's a we've.
It is definitely.
Save the day for this time. But that five hundred thousand dollars that we sent over really hurts our bonding rating, and for the next year and the years following, we are gonna have to do something to add to a trash fee, so I'd like to keep it on the agenda as long as we can.
Oh, absolutely, keep it on the agenda, and just as we're going over this and it's going back to finance, can I just ask the town manager if we have a valid contract as of now?
Uh, Counselor Leteri, uh, you have been presented by Denise Quist the information that we have available. A proposal was made um, at the end of the last fiscal year, and it detailed what the yearly payments would be. Um, I initialled that and sent that over to you. In addition, what we have been sent more recently is a five-year contract extension. I am not legally allowed to sign a contract until the funding is appropriated for said contract. So I have not signed a contract to date. What needed to be changed for me to be able to sign something was the funds allocated, whether it be through fee or transfer to pay for the amount of the contract, and I also need the approval of the council for a five-year extension of a contract. So those two items um, are still necessary. Vote on appropriation, which would be that transfer amount and a vote on um, an approval of a five-year contract. So there is not a signed contract by my office at this date and time. There is a proposal that Capital Waste has signed off on of a contract, and there is a proposal from the beginning of the fiscal year that I initialled off on concerning uh, the payment parameters of um, our.
And, and I guess the Finance Committee's questions is just that there were a couple of things that were sent over by the council clerk, and one was set to begin on July first, twenty twenty-one, and one was set to begin on July first, twenty twenty. And I guess the question that the committee had was if there was no contract in place, why are we paying the new rate on something that wasn't confirmed, and why wasn't the budget balanced in July or come to us before the eighth month of the contract, of the fiscal year for an appropriation?
So for the first item, I didn't sign a contract because the appropriation had been made. For the second item, I had been petitioning uh, with the counselors that are on the Finance Committee concerning the expiration of a solid waste fee um, for a period of time. Um, I have uh, in again, in April of two thousand nineteen, talked about this in the Spring Forum, in the budget document from last year, which the Citizens Finance Committee and the Finance Subcommittee of the Council are both highly responsible for uh, understanding and knowing what's in there. On multiple occasions in that document, note that there is an upcoming increase with the trash contract, an expiration of a solid waste fee necessary, and that there was clear knowledge that the increase in the line item was only two point two five percent when the contract was going up more than two point two five percent. So I tried as hard as I could from my office to provide information concerning this topic. The Finance Committee taking it up on their agenda is not under my control. I do not put items on the Finance Subcommittee's agenda. Um, I was asking for it, it was not visited until earlier this year, and now we're at the point that again, the process does not matter and is irrelevant at this point, there is a bill that is necessary for the town to be responsible for, and I've presented options for you all to choose from to uh, alleviate the issue. Um, when it was signed, who did what, those types of things, um, doesn't have much uh, to do with it right now, right now we owe an amount of money to Capital Waste, the contract, and an amount to deal with for the future budget, um, and we need to fix those issues. Um, timing wise, I can't necessarily speak to timing wise. Um, I think that um, Denise Quist uh, would support my assertions that um, I had reached out concerning um, the need for a fee and expiration of one, that said, the town manager's office does not set fees, that is something that the Town Council does, um, and that is something that I was advocating for. Um, I feel like the Zero Waste Committee about the increases that were coming and uh, the potential needs for a trash fee. Um, what the Town Council has done um, in the interim and in the Finance Committee as well uh, is uh, not up to the town manager's office. Um, that is up to the counselors who set those agendas and run those. Um, so that said, we're still at the point that there is five hundred six thousand dol, five hundred six hundred thousand dollars, or excuse me, five hundred six thousand dollars uh, that are still owed for fiscal twenty-one concerning this contract, and a two point five increase to the base of the fiscal twenty-two contract um, going forward. So both of those are the items that basically.
Okay, just for clarification, I need to address this, first of all, the process is relevant in this conversation, how we got here is relevant. Secondly, I've discussed with you, as you've agreed, since the day you got here, that the trash line is something that we needed to discuss. You, we have discussed this process, we have never ever, from July first till the middle of January, heard of a figure that we were uh, in deficit. As the town manager, we do set fees as the council, as the town manager, you're supposed to set a balanced budget, which you knew on July first evidently that we were roughly four to five hundred thousand in deficit. That needed to come to us before March ninth. It, it came to us even as, as early as mid-January, we were asking for a figure, we didn't get it. So, yes, the council does set fees, yes, it's the Subcommittee's responsibility to set up meetings discussing those fees. We can't discuss a fee if, one, we had no idea what the number was. I asked you how many households are in Winthrop, you said seventy-two hundred when it was forty-four hundred. We, you know, there's a lot of discussion, but this process is extremely relevant to how we got to this place. We have to go forward, we're gonna have to come up with some sort of solution, but the process cannot be forgotten.
Okay. Moving on. We're sending this back to the Finance Committee, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Counselor Ruggiero.
Yes.
Counselor Flock had.
Yes.
Counselor DeMarco.
Yes.
Counselor Leteri.
Yes.
Counselor Honan.
Yes.
Counselor LaConte.
Yes.
Counselor Frino.
Yes.
Vice President Christopher.
Yes.
President Boncory.
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries, now, we have three things on here from uh, TSAC. Did those go to Rules and Ordinance? Peter, did you have hearings on those?
No, we just got through the uh, financial motions, and then this.
Okay, so are we tabling these for the next meeting?
No, I think you should send them to the Rules and Ordinances Committee.
Okay. Motion to send the uh, the three motions from TSAC on Park Avenue on parking and on Shirley Street, Resident Parking, to the Rules and Ordinances Committee. All those in favor, if there's no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Counselor Ruggiero.
Yes.
Counselor Flock had.
Yes.
Counselor DeMarco.
Aye.
Counselor Leteri.
Yes.
Counselor Honan.
Yes.
Counselor LaConte.
Yes.
Counselor Frino.
Yes.
Vice President Christopher.
Yes.
President Boncory.
Yes.
Okay, I understand we have some people have their hand up in public comment.
There were, there were two other motions, Counsel President.
No, I said to send all three.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. It was a motion to send all three. Okay, public comment. Denise, you got a couple of hands.
Yep, public comment, we have Julie Berry first.
Hi there, is everyone able to hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Um, thank you for your time tonight, um, I wanted to address a, a number of different things. Um, I've heard a lot of noise tonight regarding not opening things because of fear of the virus, and in an effort to people keep safe, even while vaccines are going in arms and our rates are going way down. First of all, I'd like to discuss the fact that it's time to open the library. If all of our retail stores and restaurants can be open, then the library can be too. Masks can be worn, it can be done. Enough is enough, as a taxpayer, our dollars support our library. I haven't stopped paying taxes. I believe that the library should be open, it's a safe haven for children, um, and it is a, a tremendous resource to many in this community, to not allow crowds or, or certain numbers of people at a maximum capacity is ridiculous. Restaurants are now open at full capacity, open the library. Secondly, I'd like to address the comment that Town Hall hasn't been open to the public, these folks have been working and taking appointments throughout the pandemic. Again, as a taxpayer, my money goes towards having public services open, just like retail locations, mask up and open the doors. In regards to in-person meetings, I actually disagree with Mr. Boncory stating that in-person meeting didn't work last night, I thought it worked well, I don't mind getting up to speak. It's time to start meeting in person, people are getting vac, vaccinated, and again, masks work. Zoom is not a long-term solution and was never meant to be one, it does not replace in-person meetings. Kids and teachers are wearing masks all day in school and other essentials at work, and they talk through those masks, it should be a non-issue.
Thank you, Julie.
I'm not, I'm not finished, I'm sorry.
You only have three minutes, so you gotta do it quick.
I, I've only been speaking for a minute, I will finish. To compare the town of Winthrop rolling back a few things to the entire state of Texas opening everything up is asinine. They return their state to normal, and to fear monger and use this as a basis for not opening things up in the town is wildly irresponsible. And finally, in closing, in regards to the schools going back full-time on April fifth, I have zero faith in Dusty. As I mentioned during the meeting last night, they proved me right today with their ridiculous guidance that doesn't even mention high school kids. This is a town issue now, and we must send all our children back to school on April fifth. Dusty is inept and not providing guidance for our children, we must be pioneers and lead the way. Danvers, Peabody, Milton, Melrose, and other communities are sending our kids back by April seventh. We are a fraction of the size of these communities. I ask that you as town leadership step up and support the school committee and the district with full opening of schools for all ages by April fifth. And now, Mr. Boncory, I am done, thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Who else is awaiting?
Uh, Shannon Pullos.
Hi Shannon.
Hi everyone, I just wanted to read my um, actual uh, letter that I sent to the Town Council last night after the school committee meeting. Um, hi members of the Town Council, I truly hope that the members of our Town Council who were elected by the taxpayers of this town to inquire of President Boncory during this, during the school department update at tomorrow's Town Council as to why there wasn't a positive vote to get all children back to school April fifth. This is no school committee issue, this is a town-wide and Town Council issue. There are towns going back to school all around us despite the lack of Dusty guidance. Why is Winthrop not, why can't we figure it out? What makes Winthrop different or less able to be able to adapt and lead? This is, at this point, is an untenable situation for our town, I have little ones, so mine will go back hopefully on the fifth. But I have five nieces and nephews in the middle school and high school, and they deserve to go back. But at, at least if not more than my little ones. What, what is holding us back? We have to stop making excuses, our principals have course corrected over and over again. They can do it again if need be, it's not easy, but it's necessary. Please, I beg you, to get all the children back in school with a fair education, I ask the Town Council to take an interest in what is happening in our schools and with our children. I sent that last night, I just wanted to comment that one Town Council member, one made a comment after the school department report. I just want to remind people that forty-two percent of our general fund goes to the school system, twenty-three million of fifty-four million. This Town Council not only has, should have an interest, but has an obligation to be interested in their schools and the constituents of this town, take an interest. This isn't about pointing fingers and saying we can't vote, you have to put pressure on our school committee. There is a member of the school committee on this Town Council. It is time to put significant pressure on this town to lead. It was mentioned last night, we're leading, we are not leading. We are not leading. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon.
It's Shannon, thank you.
Shannon, I'm sorry. But uh, we do want all our kids back to school, but you can't go against the governor's orders, I don't believe. But go ahead, next.
We have Wendy Millar Page next.
Hi.
Hi Wendy.
Oh, sorry Wendy.
That's okay, she muted. Perfect. Um, I was calling for a couple of things, I try very all the meetings. It's hard and long, but I will say, um, as, as a person watching from home and as a person who does a lot of HR, um, find the discourse between any counselor and a town be publicly like this is awful to watch from home. It, it, there, there seems to be some accusations flying back and forth, and I would hope that this would be resolved off-screen um, before we come back to it at the next meeting or the next finance meeting regarding the trash and the timelines, whatever. Um, and that's not a personal attack in any way, it just comes across really unprofessional. In regards to the meetings in person for the Town Council and our school committee, I watched the school committee meeting last night. It was awful to try and hear any of the four people that were in the room unless they were right up to the microphone. Um, and I know that's something that's a technical issue that could hopefully. Um, and I know that's something that's a technical issue that could hopefully be resolved if we choose to have an in-person um, meeting like that. Um, and the other thing is, hopefully, people will be vaccinated soon. Um, and then a small group would be able to get together. However, the difference is, is that you would be losing those of us who attend regularly, who will not fit in a, in a space like the Harvey Room. Um, and so I would hope that we talked um, in the past about continuing with Zoom for the, for the foreseeable future due to the amount of people who are now active in town government and have the ability to work with you all and speak out. Um, and that's all I really have to say. And as far as the trash fee, um, whenever the date and time of that next meeting is, um, get it out there as soon as you can so that people have the chance to voice their opinion and say they didn't, you know, that they missed their opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen Chavez here.
Karen?
Uh, Council President, I'm not going to speak on the school, so if there's other people want to speak on the school, I'll wait.
No, go ahead, Karen. Go ahead. You've got only three minutes, like everybody else.
Okay, all right. Again, I'm going back to the budget. To balance the FY twenty-one budget, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars was allocated from the general stabilization fund. Later this was amended to be two hundred and fifty thousand, so we dodged a large deficit. Now, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars would be the two thousand, I mean, the twenty-twenty-two deficit. Now a planner is hired at a hundred thousand dollars a year. Appropriated in the FY twenty-one budget was forty-seven-five. This now is an additional deficit of fifty-two-five. Now the FY def- deficit for twenty-twenty-two is three oh-two-five-hundred. Add the five hundred and six hundred and sixty-three to that total and your FY twenty-two deficit is now eight hundred and eight thousand dollars, six hundred and sixty-three. Then I had completely forgotten about this, but we had a ten-year loan to pay for a settlement at a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So you add that to the deficit, so now we're up to nine hundred and thirty-three thousand, six hundred and thirty-three dollars to start off the FY twenty-twenty-two budget. That's almost a million dollars. This is all we are aware of now as of March ninth. Are there more surprises that will be added to the already deficit, which conceivably? Well, conceivably, could edge up to a million dollars by the end of this year. I am not speaking to you tonight as a member of the Citizens Advisory of the Finance Commission. I got all these figures offline. I did not consult anybody on the Citizens Advisory about this at all. And I want you to know, again, this is all my own thinking. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Karen. Next.
Uh, next, there's somebody online that's with the sign-in Zoom user.
I think that's Kathleen.
Hi, Kathleen Capuccio, precinct two. Thank you. Am I being heard okay?
Yes.
Okay, um, I would like to follow up um, with regard to what Jim had stated in response to um, our town manager thinking process is irrelevant with regard to contracts and how they're budgeted. Um, I've had the pleasure of working with Denise Quest over the past week with regard to asking for the contracts with the town of Winthrop and Capital Waste. In this, when I, my comments have, are, have nothing to do with what Denise has provided me with. I think she's being, she's providing me with documents that she's being told to. I have read through all the contracts that I have been provided. Right now, based on again, what I'm being provided, the town of Winthrop and Capital Waste have a contract that is only covering services through June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty. The new contract, which has not been signed, because it has to go before the board, is for services effective as of July one, two thousand and twenty-one. I have been asking, as Jim Lutte has very professionally asked, where is the contract and not a proposal that has an initial? Where is the contract between the town of Winthrop and Capital Waste for services from the period commencing as of July one, two thousand and twenty and ending on June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one? I have not been provided that through Freedom of Information requests and I would like to have that document. And at this point, frankly, I'm thinking maybe there just isn't a contract. But again, Jim, I applaud you for, for caring about this issue and process is very relevant. Thank you very much.
Anyone else on public comment?
I don't see any other hands up.
Yeah, I see one. I see Jack again. Nope, he went away. He left. Okay, no, he's back. Jack.
Sorry, I just brought in, Jack went away and then I brought somebody else in. Um, Mr. Dowd, are you looking to speak?
No, I see no one else. All right, uh, moving on, that is the end of public comment. Uh, we are moving on. I want to go back to new business for uh, one second because I, I have an appointment. I would like to uh, pass a gavel to Vice President Christopher. Here you go, Peter. And I would like to appoint a, a gentleman to the finance committee. Uh, I think he is, is an excellent addition to the finance committee. Uh, everybody got a copy of his application, I believe, today. Um, Denise sent him out. She had sent him out earlier, but I hadn't appointed him earlier. That is Matthew Goskowitz. So a motion by me is to appoint Matthew Goskowitz to the Citizens Finance Committee.
Okay, uh, Council President has made a nomination to the Citizens Finance Committee of Matthew Goskowitz. Um, uh, will the clerk please call? Uh, is there any, uh, anyone like to comment on that?
I think we need a second.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been made and seconded, Council Lutte. You're on mute, sir.
I did not receive the application, so I uh, cannot vote for this at this time.
Okay. Would we, uh, would you like to still proceed with the nomination? Cause I don't think I.
That's fine. That's fine. Yep, yep. No, that's the Council President's right. Yes, I want to.
Okay. Um, so, all right, any further debate on this nomination? Okay, will the clerk please call?
I didn't, I didn't receive it either, just to let you know.
Neither.
Yeah, I didn't. Yeah.
Denise, do you have?
This was actually sent out previously, probably like before December. Um, I can resend it out if we want to revisit.
Okay, would anyone like to make a motion about that? Uh, if there isn't, we will go forward with the vote. Okay, seeing none, uh, will the clerk please call the role on the nomination?
Counselor Righiro.
Yes.
Counselor Flakat?
Yes.
Counselor DiMarco?
Yes.
Counselor Lutte?
No.
Counselor Honan?
Yes.
Counselor LaCanti?
Yes.
Counselor Farino?
No.
Vice President Christopher?
Yes.
President Boncory?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, I will cede the chair back to Council President Boncory.
Thank you. All right, we're under, um, public relations. Does anybody have anything they want to bring up during public relations? Go ahead, Counsel DiMarco.
Thank you, President Boncory. Uh, two quick things that um, I forgot to cover. Um, first off, I did have a town hall on February twenty-sixth. Um, it was a low attendance turnout, which was probably expected since I had it at eight o'clock on a Friday night uh, before election. Um, but it was nice to get to speak to everybody and I do thank everybody who also attended. Uh, we also had a committee of committees meeting um, last week where and uh, we have started the um, the um, evaluation process for the town of employees. So I wanted to make that known as well. Um, you know, we've reached out to Austin, we've reached out to Denise, we've reached out to Carla. Um, we talked about the auditor, so, so that is in motion and uh, we fully expect to have the evaluations completed by the end of the month. So I wanted to make everybody aware of that as well. Um, finally, one last note on the schools. Um, as excited as I am to see the first football game for Winthrop High School um, on Friday night. Um, you know, I do have to say, you know, the truth of the matter is, we have contact sports. The prom is on and we can't get these high school kids in the building. That's, that makes no sense. It makes no sense. So, so I just hope and pray we get these kids in the building and we're not going against D E S I by putting them in April fifth. It's just the, you know, the, the guidelines for middle school is April twenty-eighth at the latest. So you can put them in before. Other schools have done that. Same with the elementary kids. Same with the high school. Let's get these kids in school. They need to be in school. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel DiMarco. Of course, we as a city council don't have a vote on that. Only the school committee has a vote on that. And, you know, I, I vote to put the kids back in school uh, because I, they should be back in school. But we can't go against the governor. And it's not just D E S I, it's the governor who's saying, don't do this until this date and don't do this until that date. But that, that is uh, the situation that we have. Uh, public relations and upcoming events, again, I want to thank Member Nuthurley and the MRC for running a great uh, a, a, a real great clinic in the senior center this past Saturday where about three hundred Winthrop people were given uh, doses of Moderna. Uh, please, if you're over sixty-five and you haven't caught your shot, you're over seventy-five and you're housebound, please give a call to the E O C at six one seven, five three nine, five eight three seven. We want to get you vaccinated. So hopefully we'll be getting more uh, vaccination in in the next two or three days. Please call if you need a shot and you're qualified. Thank you. A motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion been made. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye when your name is called.
Counselor Righiro.
Yes.
Counselor Flakat?
Yes.
Counselor DiMarco?
Yes.
Counselor Lutte?
Yes.
Counselor Honan?
Yes.
Counselor LaCanti?
Yes.
Counselor Farino?
Yes.
Vice President Christopher?
Yes.
President Boncory?
Yes, and thank you all for being so intent and, and uh, making sure this town goes forward. Thank you all, councils.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you, President Boncory.